....................................................................................... Okay, we're gonna start with the agenda item regarding the Browns Pond Dam. Um, and we have two people here that will be giving some information. I'd like to call on everybody that came, particularly the ones that are around that area, and also Mr. William Hanson who's here. Must've come a long way to visit us.
Yes.
And we will start with Stephanie Barrett. She's an interim deputy drain commissioner of Muskegon County. And she's going to give the board information. We're gonna have a discussion. What I'd like is if you guys got questions, audience people, I just write them down for right now because we wanna keep the flow going between that and Mr. Schultz. So we'll be visiting those questions at the end. And this is Stephanie.
Hello. Um, I know there've been conversation before with the drain commissioner's office and with the township board.
Yeah, we'll say it higher. And this way.
Sorry. Can you hear it?
Yeah.
All right. Um, and the drain commissioner was not available to be here today, so I can't speak to what he has spoken through before. I know that there was conversation on possibly creating an inter-county drain. If that were to be done, it would increase the number of people who would help pay for any maintenance of the dam, um, any work that needed to be done. Um, not just the structural of the dam itself, but you know, the spillways, the, you know, brush cleaning, you know, general maintenance. Items.
Do me a favor. Just to help this progressive.
Okay, sorry. I just tried to.
Yep.
Put everybody. Um, the thing is with the drain code, it's been established in 1956 and it's very vague in some areas and other areas is very strict on what you can and cannot do. When it comes to something like this, before we can create a county drain, we actually have to create a district and we have to get a petition to create a district. Um, there's certain ways that it can be done and normally it's, you know, say 10 freeholders is what it's called, that own property that would be liable for an assessment, a freeholder, be a husband and wife if they're both on it, um, you know, say there's three people on it, they could all count. It's not just one parcel, one signature. But with something like this, as soon as, well, let me back up. It can also be a township, a village, they can also petition for a county drain, so can the road commission under certain circumstances, and so can the health department under circumstances. But when it comes to something like this where the best way for it to happen, for it to become an inter-county drain, to pull in from Oceana County, that's where it gets complicated. The township could pass a resolution in support of it, but it actually has to be 50% of the landowners that sign the petition. That's where the waters get really money because you don't really know what your district's gonna be until you get a petition and you figure out if it's necessary or not. And that actually comes from the drain commissioner. If he feels it's necessary, he can move it forward. If he doesn't feel it's necessary, he can stop it in its tracks. When it comes to an inter-county drain, there are several people involved, but there's three main people. It would be the drain commissioner of Muskegon County, the drain commissioner of Oceana County, and somebody from the Michigan Department of Agriculture. Normally, Mike Redd is the director. One of his deputies is Brady Harrington. Brady normally tries to come to the meetings and he can represent for him. But those three people would return a necessity for an inter-county drain. So if two people say yes, one person says no, that the yes is win it. So in a case like this, if, you know, Muskegon County felt it was necessary, Oceana did not, and Department of Ag did not, it would be done. It would stop right there. If two of them felt yes and one felt no, then it could move forward, but that's when a district could be created and then we would have to have 50% of property owners before we can do more work. It gets a little more complicated after that, but really what it boils down to is if it were to become a Muskegon County drain or an inter-county drain, then the drain commission would be the one that would be out there doing the maintenance of the physical dam itself and the nearby area. And then assessments actually would go out to everybody in the district and it's supposed to be by benefit. For the most part, anybody that's in the district would have a benefit because their water is flowing through a watershed to that point. And that's how districts are normally created. You don't just follow roads like in the past because that was the easy way. We do more of a watershed approach now. But, um, that's what I can tell you as far as an inter-county drain. David is actually gonna talk about lake level boards. That's something else that the drain commissioner's office is involved with. I'm not aware of any conversation on that, so I can't speak to that, but he did bring information for you for that, but that is something else that when, and when a lake level board is created, the drain commissioner is one of the members on that board. And that could also do assessments, but I'll let him speak to that part.
Okay, just the board. Have questions on the first word. That's why I said there's kinda information gonna be gleaned from both and we might actually have Stephanie back up there because once Dave speaks, it might create. I think what you and I were just talking about was the same thing. How do you determine that? When the, when the actual dam is owned by the township?
Right.
Then you have the landowner owners who would be in the assessment district.
And that's based on the benefit. And Dave and I were just discussing before I came up here that he has created a preliminary district, so that would help. And he has looked, but I'll let him speak to that part, but that would kind of help us look at it to start with. You could kinda get an idea in your head of what all would be involved, how many properties would be involved.
Before he, before he does come up, just in the part we were talking about, and this is one of the things I was talking to Dave Fisher, um, yeah.
Before.
Was what benefits that would have to create this form of a district. And most of our discussion was about the fact that it, the ability to reach further and touch more, um, expand the area, decrease the amount overall because of the expanded area was basically where the idea came from of a benefit.
Yeah, 'cause right now it's just the lake owners, correct?
Correct.
And, you know, truly, the lake owners are not the only people that benefit from this. It actually goes out much further and I guarantee you, if there was flooding of this, you would have a lot more calls.
Oh, yes.
Than people that are just on the lake because it does affect many more than are right there around it. I mean, and his map will help you if he brought that with him to kinda show you where, you know, all people that really would benefit and those people would be brought in and they would be a portion of benefit. And by doing that, through the drain process, you have a day of review where anybody who's in that district can come in, they can look at their percentages, and if they don't agree with the benefit percentage, it does not give you the monetary amount. It just tells you a proportionate number, then you have the right to go to court, to prove it more and argue your benefit. But it takes it off the township hand as far as assessing benefits. It makes it to the drain commissioner and the engineers to figure out benefit. But the drain commissioner sets the amounts.
Okay. This is what I'm saying. Is this is just to fix the dam?
Right.
This is what we're talking about right now?
This, yes, this would be.
I know we had some other problems.
Yep, it would not only fix the dam, but it would be maintenance, preventative and any maintenance that came up. So if the sand started, you know, eroding around the sides again, then we would take measures to stabilize that, you know, be it, you know, sand with, you know, riprap with, you know, textile material that holds grasses there, whatever it takes, you know, we would come in, we would take care of that, and then that would be assessed out to everybody that's in the district, not just the people that are, you know, a little property owners around the lake.
So we won't know exactly how much the amount is.
No.
Because it'll be an ongoing amount.
Yes.
And the other thing is too, it's an ongoing thing. It doesn't, ours had a finite date. It was so many years and it was paid off. And then this special assessment district was paid off. This is a living thing. It continues.
Yes, it would become a corporation.
Yeah.
Any county drain is technically, it's a public corporation. It can sue, it can be sued, you know, it has the right to borrow money if it has to. But, you know, and if it were to be something where it was a very large expense, it would not have to be paid in one year. We could set a special assessment table, you know, we could have it be a 10-year assessment. But you would know right up front that this is the amount that this is going to cost. Any additional maintenance, you know, weed spraying, brush removal, whatever, that's gonna be minor. It's not gonna cost that much.
Okay. I just, I'd like to know an amount.
I know, and that's the hardest part. And the other thing is, you know, there would be another county involved in this, so, you know, anytime any work's done, they actually have to meet and have a meeting and say, okay, this is the work that we feel needs to be done, and there has to be an agreement. And that is what, you know, two representatives from the drain commissioner's offices and somebody from the Department of Agriculture. So it's not just one person going in and saying, okay, we need to do this now.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Beautiful. Kind of a timeframe typically? I mean, if, if everybody's on the same page and everybody's in agreement, what kind of a timeframe are you looking at? 'Cause I know there's gotta be a lot of preliminary.
Well, and that's.
Work to get to the point that you're talking about.
That's the part where I'm saying that waters are kinda money because we have to first figure out a preliminary, I have to put it that way, district so that we can figure out what 50% of the land will be in there so that we know how many signatures we need. We need that first and foremost before it could even move forward. So, you know, there is initial work in the beginning, but once we can figure out what the district is, and if we approve a district, that's done through a board of determination, it's a public hearing, notices go out, it's, you know, it's put in the paper, the board of determination tells it's three. Wait a minute, David, do we do a board determination for inter-county?
I'm not sure I would suspect so.
I believe we do. I'm like, well, 'cause inter-county's a little different, but what you have to do is you have to have three disinterested people come in. They can't live in the area, so we couldn't have anybody that lived in Blue Lake Township be on it. We couldn't have anybody in the adjoining township be on it, and they can't have an interest in the land. So if they own vacation property, if their brother owns vacation property, you know, on the lake or if they're in the district, that's not something you get. So you actually have three disinterested people who come in and they decide if it's necessary or not. Once a district is established, then you have to get another petition to establish the drain. So it depends on how, how much support you have. If you have a lot of support and you can get the signatures right away, it doesn't take that long. We just have to meet, you know, publishing deadlines, just like you do for any other kind of special assessment. We don't have as many steps, so it doesn't take as long as, as well, as long as we can get Department of Agriculture to sign on an early date, we can get it moving a lot faster. It just depends on, you know, the size of the district, how many signatures we need, how much support there is. If it's pretty much 50/50, it's gonna take a while because you're gonna have to fight to get the signatures.
Mm-hmm.
And if you can't get the signatures, I can't move forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Day here, Ben C. And this is Dave Schultz from Schultz Land and Water Consulting.
Yes, I'm based in Montague, just down the road. Been involved in this dam at various points in the past. Probably most importantly, I was hired by the road commission to do the repairs that were done prior to beaming to the township. At that time, really the only deficiency, in my estimation, was the spillway capacity. Everything else had been fixed to make the dam safe and secure. This issue, just to play off of what Stephanie was talking about on the inter-county drain process, because Sand Creek watershed is so large, I would say it'd be very difficult to get 50% of the freeholders to sign a petition. Typically, they don't wanna contribute money to fix something 10 miles downstream from where they live. That's probably the biggest handicap ongoing with the inter-county drain process. There's another process which is called Part 307 of the inland lake, the inland lake levels, which allows for the establishment of a lake board that would be similar in a way to what a county drain is. It, it sets up an assessment district, it sets up a board consisting of the drain commissioner, a township official, and a landowner who's on the lake at a minimum. In some cases, there'll be more. But it's more constricted to the area in question, so it's much more easy to implement. The, one of the advantages is, of course, again, liability becoming like a public corporation. You have some, well, you have some protection that you don't have as, as freeholders, which is why it was a good thing you didn't let the road commissions give you that property. In the same way as with a, with a county drain or an inter-county drain, there's an entity that's in charge of, of making sure maintenance and inspections and repairs get done in a timely fashion, keeping the dam in good shape and in the good graces of the state So really, I, I got this off the, off the state of Michigan website and I'll leave it here behind for, for the board to run copies and maybe study it. There's a lot of tasks that often, that need to be done and some resolutions that need to be made by the county board of commissioners. So it's not as detailed or drawn out as establishing a county or drain or an inter-county drain, but it's still a procedure that you have to go through. You'd have to have an attorney involved as well as an engineer and deal with the, with the court. And we have a judge make a determination on various aspects of it and then it becomes law. So if someone wants to tinker with the dam down the road, they're deterred from doing so because there's, there's more accountability into the future. So really, I would recommend that the, if, if the township is looking to set up an establishment that will take care of the issues as they arise over time, rather than becoming a burden to the township board alone to make decisions or to spend money or whatever, this lake level association establishment is definitely worth considering and looking at. And they're saying it might take as much as a year to go through that process. Again, I've already done a lot of preliminary studies, so a lot of the investigation, if you retain me to do the work, is already just about ready to be canned and put in a report. Some of the other legal stuff and some of the larger watershed issues, I didn't bring the map. I've been working on, basically I've taken USGS quadrangle maps and pasted them together to show the entire watershed area. And I've started working on it, but there's, Sand Creek watershed's pretty interesting. It's got a lot of kettles and dips and where the rainfall doesn't contribute to the runoff during a large storm. And that's where I'm sort of getting away from the administrative part to the technical part, of which I feel a little more comfortable talking. I, it's my opinion that the state of Michigan's estimation of the design discharge or flow rate of Sand Creek is too high because of all the sand and all the trees that we have. We don't have shopping centers, we don't have clay very much in this watershed, and we don't have a lot of cross culverts either. There are some areas where you look at where the water, the people would be contributing their water down to the flow of the stream, but they're contributing through groundwater. The water has to soak into the ground and get to this, to the creek that way. So I'm of the opinion that a watershed study would be very valuable to be able to assert that the state's numbers are too high and that many of the larger scale activities we have to do to make the dam compliant would not be so large scale or expensive. I've done this in the past, well, the closest one is Mill Pond over in Whitehall where I presented my information to the state and they agreed with me for the most part. They had to be a touch higher than me to prove they were, you know, being cautious, but I think it's money well spent. There was discussion last year about the Skeels Creek crossing and trying to quantify what kind of water gets through there. That's probably also worth doing, but more to calibrate or to verify whatever I would find in analyzing the watershed. From what I've heard anecdotally, the Skeels Road is never overtopped with water on Sand Creek during a large storm. We've had some pretty large storms. I guess 1986 would be the, the biggest test that we've experienced around here. But there are other things that can be done to, to bring the dam into compliance if, if the spillway that is there is still found to be not adequate enough. And we've talked about some of this in the past, at least I've talked to some people about it in the past. One of them is that we could raise the height of the embankment, which means the water can pond up higher without risking overtopping, which allows more water through the spillway. We could also take the top off of that spillway and open it up. That, 'cause weir flow without being constrained is much more efficient than conduit flow or flow that's constrained on all sides. And during a hundred-year rainfall, that's more likely to be the condition you would find. And there's also the secondary spillway on the west side. Someone at the meeting in November mentioned that there's something wrong there because at the bottom, the water's only this deep, but it's, you know, totally, you know, engaged at the top, which to me says that that is a real steep slope coming down there, which means it's all controlled at the inlet. We could do some minor reconfiguration of the inlet and greatly increase the flow capacity of that structure as well. So there's a number of things that can be done to bring the dam into compliance with the state's rules and regulations and engineers' standard practice and best, best methods of analyzing. But I think it can be done relatively cost-effectively. Of course, the assessment district, as it is now, is small. I don't have the number of how many people are on that assessment roll. Is it a dozen or two dozen or?
No, I think it's 22.
22?
I believe it's 22.
Okay, that's, still, but when you're, when you're doing regular maintenance and the bill's 220 bucks, no one's gonna gripe, but when you do a repair or an upgrade and it's 22,000, then you're gonna have a lot of people squealing pain. And the, that's why I think the discussion of establishing a, a county drain or an inter-county drain or a lake level association is powerful because, as Stephanie said, you have through the county drain commissioner, an ability to spread out costs over time so that people don't get hit too hard with a large expense all at once. So that's, that's another big advantage of, of going with the lake board or, or a, a county drain.
But yeah, you think that the county drain would be, that would be harder for us to be able to get?
Yes, because it actually is an inter-county water course. The only way we'd really get bang for our buck to bring more people into the district would be to extend it up into Oceana County. Otherwise, you're just going to Skeels Road anyway, right? So you could increase the assessment district slightly, but it'd be the same, I mean, with a lake level, you increase it slightly, but it's much easier, much more easily attained than trying to expand the drain into a large watershed where you need to get, first you need to find 50% of the landowners and then you have to get them to sign a petition, which is a very difficult process and it's long drawn out and quite possibly at this scale due to failure.
I don't know, lake, lake board itself, is it the same thing? It's an ongoing district or the board is ongoing and it's, once it's created, it's that will keep going?
Yes. And again, there's, there's that, there's a mechanism for getting things done. There's a responsible party for the state to communicate with. And it's all codified. It's all, you know, it's all codified so that when there's a question, just like with the county drain, if there's a question, you go to the county, or you go to the drain code and you, you determine your, your answer based on that. You're not having to put yourself in a tough position making a command decision that might turn out to be not the, the best one. So I think there's some real advantages. I think with the system that you have set up now, there's still things that could be done and should be done, not waiting for this process to go through. I was just out at the dam before the meeting and the embankment need mowing pretty badly. It's just a mow, but still someone's gotta go get the gas and get the mower and go do the work. And I know there's been some volunteers that have been doing a lot of this and that's good as far as being fiscally responsible, but, and that's something else to think about because if you do establish a lake level or a county drain, as Stephanie said, there would be maintenance work that would be scheduled and done and then hence paid for, where when the system you have now with volunteers, as long as they're responsible and accountable, you're not having to pay so much for labor, maybe for, you know, fuel and parts and such, and such. But I think that with the, the assessment district you have now, it's still, you're still able to do some things. It may be a desire of the board to have someone work up a, you know, a procedure, maybe that mimics some of the procedures of the lake level board or an inter-county drain board, and at least be able to take steps in the near term while contemplating, make the bigger picture over the long haul. I don't know if there's a balance in the account right now. I imagine if.
There is.
If you were gonna be asking for more money to do work, the room might be a little more full. But I think honestly that we can, that I could engineer solutions to bring that dam into compliance with the state rules and regs relatively affordably.
Okay, I have questions too. The lake board?
Yes.
Is that also based on benefits, the same as the?
Well, it's.
Is it based on the benefit versus?
Right here it says that by establishing a lake board, you provide a means whereby all benefited property owners and political subdivisions share in the cost of maintaining the necessary lake level control facilities, which includes the township as well. But with this, the township would be one member of the group. It wouldn't be the, the be all and end all, always in the hot seat group.
Yeah, and, and you touched quite a bit on the fact of where we are right now with DQ having to come into compliance. And you're talking about, it relates to watershed study that you've already actually been working on, and then you're talking about actual remed, possible remedies.
Yes. And, you know, the watershed study, I mean, studying maps and drawing pictures is the fun part of the job, so it wasn't hard to take a little spare when I had some free time to, I was curious, you know, I've been involved in this structure in the past and so I do have a greater attachment to it than to some theoretical potential project out there. So.
Then would you consider writing a proposal regarding, two things you talked about, the watershed study, you also talked about the culvert off of Skeels Road?
Yes.
That being a different aspect, but you don't think that is as important as an aspect as the watershed study would be?
That's, I would, I would say that's true mainly because I think we can, I can, my study is gonna come in with a much lower 100-year flood. my study is gonna come in with a much lower hundred-year flood than what the state has estimated. They, they don't do the same detailed work anymore than the bank does, the detailed work to require flood insurance of you or not. They do very basic stuff and it takes an engineer or surveyor to come in to do the more detailed work to verify that your structure's out of the floodplain. And it's sort of the same thing with the watershed. You know, they don't go out and drive through the watershed and see where the culverts are and do that detailed of a, of a look. They do it remotely from Lansing for the most part. And a lot of the stuff they do is of statistical methods more than technical methods, where I would be doing a technical method that'd be defendable by my, the data I gather.
Well, if you were to do this, if you were to do that study, present the board with a proposal, there is monies in the special, from the first special assessment district. If you were to present a proposal to the board, the board approved that, how would that work regarding you working with the state? And you said before that on Mill Pond over there, how did that work? Work with the state, the DEQ regarding?
Well, the dam safety unit of the DEQ is one of the more easy to get along with groups of all of them because they're, they're chartered with dam safety. They're not worried as much about a critter here or a, you know, a sand dune there. So they, you know, they are more problem-solving oriented and getting the dams that, there are many, many dams in the state that are not up to accepted standards. Yours is close, but it's just that capacity issue. That's why I say there's two ways to solve the capacity issue. One is to assert that we don't need it because, you know, there's not that much coming down. So we've got adequate capacity or we do some retrofits to increase the dam's capacity to pass the flood safely, or a combination of the two. It could very well turn out that my watershed study would say, well, we still need to do something here. But it might be just one of the three structural items, not all three. You know, I look at the dam crest and it's, there's still some asphalt there from the road from thirty years ago and it would be in some ways an amenity, an improvement of the amenity of the resource to, to remove that asphalt and you could raise the embankment and get a safer structure and actually enhance the resource that's the township's, and township residents to enjoy.
As you do this, if we, if the township wanted you to do this watershed study, we moved past that, you dealt with the state, they compromised on some issues, then we're looking at what we need to do to fix it. You, you had given a couple ideas of raising the height of the embankment, removing the top, looking at the secondary spillway. Are any of those, just in a general term, can't hold you to a extremely expensive?
No. I guess the toughest one would be removing the top off that spillway because then you probably wanna put some kind of a footbridge over the top of it so people could pass from one side to the other. And the construction techniques would be a little tricky to make sure we didn't wreck it while we were trying to save it. The most expensive item that I didn't even mention that should be considered in the long haul is to repair or resurface the eroded concrete on the, on the structure where it's highly degraded. You know, you can break it apart with your fingers without any trouble. When the, when the county road commission did their repair work, they did that on the inside of the spillway because that was a, you know, a structural safety issue. Before we did that, there was actually a hole in the concrete all the way through to the embankment behind the concrete. So that, and I looked at it over the years since then and it's been holding up really well. So I would definitely recommend specifying the same type of repair material that was used by them. It's not cheap, but it would be, it would bring the structure into, again, be more aesthetic. It's not necessary at this point for the safety of the structure. So, you know, there, there are different levels of importance, I think.
Is the, is the upper portion of the roadway, is that considered part of the dam? Or is the dam just the structure underneath where the water flows?
It's the embankment, which is the road embankment, is also a dam embankment. It's also the two structures that pass water through.
But not the road surface necessarily?
Yes, that, yes, yes, the entire structure from the toe of one slope to the toe of another slope and everything in between. Still got a mystery what that big old structure is in the middle of it and it's got a little pipe coming in, but we won't go there right now.
Well, I, I think the biggest question is because you've mentioned something too about resurfacing the road or putting a walkway in. Of course, it's not drivable. So are we taking away from what it is by removing the surface and putting a walkway, which would make it look better? I'm just, I was curious as to how that, that would work. That's all something we have to look at down the road.
Well, yes, and I think as far as my assertion in defense of the landowners in the assessment district and what would be proven by establishing an inter-county drain or a lake board is that more people than just those landowners benefit from that structure, that pond. As was proved when I was out there, there was a family fishing. Now, maybe they were from somewhere on the pond, but I just got a feeling they were, came in. That was their access point to that resource. So really the township, and this happens on other county drain projects, the township and the county also share in the cost of maintenance and repairs and inspections. It's because there's a public health, safety and welfare issue that the governmental units have a responsibility to respond to and maybe an individual along the lake doesn't. So that's one thing I would, would throw in there that the township should be contributing something to the overall maintenance and repairs and inspections of the structure and maybe the county too. But through the lake level establishment, that's codified in there and become, they get also, everybody gets a certain assessment percentage. Typically for a local unit of government, government, it's like between seven and a half percent and fifteen percent. With the county, I'm not so sure because a lot of that is tied into the road commission. We do have the Skeels Road, but it's not at the lake and the road over the embankment is no longer a county road. So the county might not be as involved in this as with other standard projects.
And like the culverts are still there, so.
Yes.
So just the ones that are still-
They're old.
That, yes, we, I've been talking to Ken about that also. Because this brought that up, the fact that those were, were old. So I think, you guys have any other?
As far as you doing a proposal for us, will that cost us anything for you to make a proposal to us?
No.
I asked him that before. I'm glad you did, but I did ask him that same thing because of the-
Want the body of that road be necessary just to keep it firm like it is? You can't cut the public off, so.
You mean on top of the dam? Yes, I was just saying, you know, if indeed raising the embankment height was a cost-effect, a most cost-effective option, you know, you wanna take out the asphalt, backfill it with clay to raise it. If you want something that the water can't seep through, but that would all be specified prior to anybody doing the work. But yeah, then whatever you did at the top, whether you made just a grassy lawn or you had some kind of a sidewalk or a, even a, you know, a multi-walkway, it's really the township's choice on, on what level they want to go as far as the other aesthetic parts of any project like that.
As far as a grant, I know you have to, you know, get some information from the state level and even Stephanie, I don't know, is there a possibility of getting some money, you know, somewhere for this?
Well, the, the two primary grant programs that I've been looking at and aware of, one of them was why the gentleman came in last November because he, there's a grant for removing dams or to repair significant dams. There's a strong sentiment not to want to remove this dam and have Brown's Pond turn into a sand creek. And there's a high probability that this would not be considered a significant structure. Now, maybe there could be some work in that direction to see if, if that could be argued efficiently and mainly because of the land use downstream of the dam, I think. And from a safety issue, that we could possibly move in that, it's worth inquiring in that direction. The other grant that's in full bollard now deals more with water quality issues. So really it'd be hard to find that this, that the work that needs to be done here would qualify under the terms of that grant project or grant system.
Okay, so those are the only two that are being offered right now at the state level?
To the best of my knowledge, but I will certainly take a look and get ahold of some of my colleagues closer to Lansing and see if they have anything to contribute.
Yeah, because any amount, I mean, it doesn't have to be fifty percent. It could be a certain dollar amount too, that would help.
We didn't qualify for the imminent threat grant, of course.
That's the one that was last year.
The imminent threat one, that was, that was one that we didn't qualify for because there was no imminent threat there. And that was one of the grants that, and then that's the one also that was tagged with removals. You can definitely get a lot of money to remove them. Unfortunately, because you have large departments supporting that idea of returning stuff back to its natural state.
Do you know that there's a, a lot of dissension amongst the Browns Pond Association members and some of them would like to withdraw out of that association? If we were to go and try to get a tax district and we can't get half the number of people that is necessary, what's the next step after that? And I'll say didn't go for the assessment.
Well, the inter-county drain, you need fifty percent of the landowners to sign a petition, which in a large watershed is extremely difficult with a lake level. All you have to do is have a resolution of a local unit of government to get the wheels turning on that.
Totally different, different means of creating-
And actually, what you have to do is make a resolution of the board to go to the county and ask the county board of commissioners to make a resolution to establish Browns Pond Lake Level Association.
And that's the information you're gonna leave so we can-
Yes, yeah, I'll leave this behind.
So then we don't need the fifty percent, is that what you're saying?
Well, what I'm saying is that getting fifty percent of the landowners in the Sand Creek watershed, to sign a petition to establish a county drain is a difficult, nigh on impossible. I wouldn't recommend doing that way. You could expend tremendous amount of time and resources and not even get past the first step of the process.
But still, the process would be, once you get the, the lake board, you know, once we go to the county commissioners and they, okay, you know, make a resolution for us to do this, then you would still, if we were going to do something with that lake board, we still have to have so many people okay with it, is that correct?
Well, the lake board, but not the assessment district. That, see, what, if a lake board is established, you've got the drain commissioner, a member of the township board and a member of the assessment district at a minimum that are on the board. Those people are the ones that make decisions on when to do maintenance, how to do repairs, who to hire to do the repairs and inspections and all that. So it helps, you know, you get more input and people can make decisions together. But it's not the fifty percent of the people in the assessment district that would have to vote on everything and anything. It would come to the lake board.
But who's going to pay for it?
The people in the assessment district, which I say would be the same way we've got it now except that, like I say, the township would be also a member of that with a percentage.
But do we, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Do we still, do they still have to vote in order to make that assessment district? That's, that's what I, you know, like what Lyle was saying, that there has been, you know, people that are upset with the way things are going. And I, I want them to be sure that things are going to be going the way that they want them to go. So that's why we would form a lake board. But I'm just saying, if we need more money in our assessment account, then we need to have a certain percentage of people on board to do that, is that correct? To make another assessment, to have the money?
Doesn't the lake board, well, not-
Well, there'll be, there'll be-
Control the assessment district then?
I'm sorry.
Doesn't the lake board, just as you were saying with the other district, doesn't the lake board control the assessment district and the assessment district monies regarding that? You said it's like a corporation, so it wouldn't be the township collecting it or holding it?
It would actually be held at the drain commissioner's office or at the bank that the drain commissioner's office uses.
And I, I understand that. My question is, are we going to have enough people say, okay, that we're going to do this again? Well, if we need the monies, we need to have everybody on board to do it.
Well, that's, trying to reach consensus on spending money is also very difficult. And that's part of the reason why these procedures are put in place because sometimes certain things become necessary and you can't have some people holding, holding the safety of the dam or the downstream lands hostage. So by putting this system together, I guess my biggest, my biggest issue is making sure everybody's heard during the process of establishing a lake board. And there are hearings that go as part of the process in establishing it. It doesn't just automatically, boom, happen. There has to be a preliminary engineering report. There's a whole, there's a whole procedure here that I'm sure will be copied and given to board members to, to look at. But there, you know, there are actually hearings that people are gonna be invited to attend.
But those are public hearings, so anyone from the township would be, have the right to attend just like this one.
And just like the board of determination or the drain commissioner's office or even you as a board, you're, you're sensitive to the, to the concerns of people that are affected by your decisions. I, I don't think that would change. But it just, what it does is it gives more long-term safety reliability to the structure no matter how, you know, people move in and out or officers move in and out or there's, of their chairs of duty. There'll always be a, a board that'll be responsible for making sure that maintenance and repairs are done properly.
So once it is created, it's there and?
And honestly, I would expect that if there was, if there was, continued to be volunteers in the, in the group, that the lake board would be more than willing to let them continue to do work as long as it was done, you know, according to standard specifications and procedures.
Just one more question.
Sure.
Sorry, I, I just need, I need to know how this is going to work. Okay, so we established the lake board that has a drain commissioner on it. It has somebody from the Blue Lake Township Board and it has like two people that are residents on the pond. So you have this group of people. They're deciding what is going to be done with the money that is in the assessment, is that correct?
That is correct.
It doesn't ultimately come back to the board where the board makes that decision. It is the lake board that is made with these other people.
Correct.
Okay.
Now, again, I would say that any member of the Blue Lake Township that would happen to be a member of a lake board would want to discuss the issues with their colleagues before they went and-
But they would be one vote?
They would be one vote. So you still have to reach some kind of a consensus between the landowners, the local government and the county before, you know, you went and expended funds for maintenance or repairs or inspections.
And we obviously have two things going on, that possibility and what have, what we have to do now with the dam itself, so.
So I'd be glad to put together a proposal to do a watershed study and I'll also put a proposal together- And I'll also put a proposal together to study the Skewell Road crossing. I think that's secondary in importance. Like I say, the, the thing it would do for me as a scientist is it would, I could look at the numbers I get from studying the watershed, and I can look at the numbers for the crossing and say, okay, that matches really good, that makes sense. Or, you know, let's take a step back and, and study it a little deeper.
And why doesn't it match?
Right. But the state would say, well, you know, yeah, the road hasn't overtopped yet, but according to our calculations, it's going to one day.
And they haven't moved from the last decision they made, they're sticking to it.
No, he upheld it, Luke Trump will help to back that decision. But he's also willing to let us own this road. He said, you know, if you're going to do that.
No, Luke, being the dam safety unit, he's really good to work with. He's very proactive, positive. So, yeah, I'm glad Luke's working on, on this for Blue Lake Township, right of it.
Does the board have any more questions? Thank you, if you're feeling, if you'd like to make copies. And we're to the public comment, there are a lot of people here, so please look at your comment to three minutes. If there's a lot of questions, they might be, have to be recorded and answers gotten back because I'm sure there's questions out there who kindly stepped in the microphone and identified by name and your address. Anyone that wants to make a comment from the audience? Fred?
As always.
Oh, wait, wait, Fred's, Fred's coming.
Okay.
Go ahead, Fred.
Go ahead, Fred.
I don't want to cut into your clock.
Okay. And if you have a lot of questions, and I see Fred has written them down, and since I'm limiting you, if possible, we'd also love to make copies of them afterwards.
Can you go now?
You may, thank you.
Fred Irving, yes, 11645 Pond Road, probably across the road from the, from the pond. So I'm really interested in what these two proposals entail. And I will ask some questions, and first of all, Stephanie. And then if you would jot down those questions and answer them later, please. Stephanie, and also Dave.
Stephanie first. Please still direct it this way, I know you're, I know you're talking to Stephanie, she understands that, but.
Well, I'm going to ask her the question.
But direct it this way.
Is that permissible?
If you direct it this way, yes. She understands you're asking the question, she's going to write it down.
I'm going to ask the question of Stephanie. Why do we possibly need a drain district? And what would be the boundaries of that district in relationship to the boundaries of the pond? And do you have a written explanation of what you gave us tonight? And how much of the ocean or land belongs to the state or federal government across on the north side of Skewell Road? And Dave, your turn. The lake board, as I understand it, would be comprised of three members of individuals. And we can go to the state website and find what you were talking about tonight?
Yes, that's what I copied, came right from their website.
Dave, thank you.
And how big is the watershed that we were talking about for Sand Creek? And then what needs to be done per the DEQ most recent report? Those are all my questions, and you can answer them later if you would supply it in a format to the public. Because I'm sure they would probably like some answers.
Thank you. And that's why I want to get everybody's questions out first, then they can try to answer. Mr. Vickers, you would?
Uh, Fred pretty much covered all the questions I had. The only thing I had for Dave was that that's the.
Greg? Sorry. I know you didn't want to get out with this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Fred answered, asked most of the questions that I had at this time. But I do want to address Dave's concern on that, that's a, that could be a pump off, Dave, and it was put in, I believe, back in the day when they hit the Rochdale Inn, it was a water supply.
That was the extra.
And I just want to thank the board for moving forward on this project.
Thank you.
Get to Debbie, you would?
I'm concerned, I want to understand what benefit cost, you know? You own property and you're taxed on, you know, extra monies for waterfront and that kind of thing. Wouldn't this group coming in and they assess this on benefit, wouldn't that be like a double? I mean, obviously, I have a lot of waterfront, but my taxes account for that. I'm already paying a due to live on the water. And this benefit cost that was being discussed, would I not be? I guess I'm confused on how that works out. To me, it was almost like a, be a double duty, you know? I'm paying extra for living on the water and then paying extra because I have more waterfront for the dam, which seems to me like double benefit. And if this kind of thing were put out there, what about our assessment fund as it is? Would that be refunded to us? Would that, you know, where do those monies go? And I think the board should be able to answer that, but not at this time, not at this time.
We'll get all the questions down first.
And once this type of thing either way would be set up, would be, would, and say a fee or a due or however you want, an assessment set, would that be set? Because I find that it seems to me like every time I agree to something, and as long as you're holding up your part of it, you know, me, I agree, let's say, Don and I have an agreement. For X amount of dollars, you're going to build me a house. Well, if you don't build me the house, you're not going to get the dollars. Why should I pay you the dollars if you're not going to do? You see, it's an agreement. It's inequitable here for the landowners, it seems to me, because we're at the mercy of everybody else setting up the fees that need to be. It seems like a lot of paperwork, meetings and everything else, I know that doesn't come cheap. So all of that's going to have to be paid for by somebody. And again, we've already been assessed, you know, this, in my mind, was settled a long time ago. And now we're talking about revamping the whole thing. Okay.
Hurry up, your answer's up.
Mr. Schultz, you said that the dam needed maintenance. I was concerned about which side of the dam were you talking about? Was it down the dam or the roadside part? And quickly, the fire department. The fire department has, has access to the pond, is a resource for water and filling and stuff. Would that not be able to be calculated in on something? They use, the fire department comes down and uses Brons Pond, Brons Pond Pond on both sides for their water. I would think that that access should be worth something.
Thank you.
Melanie?
I, yes. Would you step up? Cheryl Whelan, 11588 Pond Road. I'm curious if the lake level association or board is established, does that in any way change the ownership of the dam? And regarding benefit of the pond to others, certainly it's of a benefit to the campground, and we see many people who come there with their kayaks and, from the campground and put in or on the pond, other people that we talked to who have fished the pond for years. So it isn't just those of us who live on the pond who benefit. And Debbie, I'm curious about the comment that you said about people wanting to withdraw from the pond association. Are you talking about the association or the assessment district? I didn't know which of those two you actually meant. And then also, I'm wondering about the assessment district, is it not already established? So it wouldn't have to be a 50% of whomever again? I thought that district had already been established, so it wouldn't have to be reestablished.
Thank you. Mr. Hanson?
Mike Hanson, 11264 Pond Road. Just a quick comment, more than a question to Debbie's questions about the lake level. My understanding of the lake level is it's really what it is, an imposed assessment. There is no public input other than their, I guess their input, but they have no control over whether that is established or not. And that's my concern with Dave's proposal with the lake level assessment. The other thing that I'd like to make sure that gets addressed is in the last 15, 20 years, and even the last seven or eight that we've been on the pond, there's been significant degradation in the size of that basin, huge difference. Greg lives at that end, it almost is non-existent. So when we get into these watershed issues and capacities and things of that, I just want to make sure that these engineering studies take that into consideration. The silting issue on that pond is, is decreasing exponentially in the years, and that basin is going to decrease significantly. So we might move forward with this and spend a lot of money to get nowhere unless some of these other silt issues and filling issues are addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? In the public comment part? I'm going to ask Stephanie, if she'd come on back up. In the meantime, you were asking about the assessment fund. That is something we would have to find out. You're talking about part of that monies, of course, will be used now, which what we have to do. We're not sure what we have to do, we need DEQ compliance at this point. So part of that monies would be used there. Other than that, I'm not sure how that works. I'm sure there are laws regulating that, we have to find out, that would be part of it. And the other part, you're talking about benefit cost, living on the lake versus a special assessment district? The special assessment district, of course, is or should be based on who's benefiting from it there. I think that's a little different than, than the fact that you're benefiting from it and how the taxes work. That's mandated by the state and how taxes are or assessments are figured. But I'll find out more information from Marion for you on that, because it's a legitimate question. Was there one other one we had to answer?
There was a question to me.
There was a question to you, and we had one about fire department access. We know there's two dry hydrants down there. But if this assessment district was established, it sounds like the township would be paying portion anyway. Not sure, because we haven't been able to read the papers, so. And Debbie has the question about the association. What I was referring to was what Lyle had brought up about the pond association having difficulties in the pond association and the assessment. Okay. And, and wanting to get it going. I mean, you know, I was just referring to what Lyle was talking about.
We did have one other question on the assessment district. The assessment district was established with a finite timeline of years. Once those years were completed, it was completed. So the, the district itself, I think, would have to be started back from scratch to reestablish it because, because it had a timeframe. Not sure, I'd have to double check, and I will. But it did have a finite date on it. Thank you, Stephanie, for waiting.
Oh, that's okay. Just a couple things. The first one, why do we need a drain district? If the drain commissioner's office were to accept the Browns Pond Dam as a county drain, you have to establish a drain district first. That is the land areas that benefit from what would be established as the county drain. The boundaries, we can't tell you that right now, we don't know what that is. If David did a watershed study, that would show us all the waters that flow there, and that would help us figure out, and that was part of the benefit question, that would help us figure out who has the most benefit, where the benefit comes from. I just want to, do you have a marker so I can do a little graphing?
They're hanging up.
Perfect. Right now, I mean, this is just going to be a rough sketch, you know, like right now, say, this is the pond. So your, your district right now is just these properties around the outside. If we come in and do watershed, you know, say, Skewell Road is up here, we could be pulling in all these, because if they have water flowing through here, they all have a benefit of this being here. Their water is flowing here. Same thing downstream. If their water, you know, if this is helping them from flooding out, they have a benefit as well. So without doing an actual study to see what, because, you know, water comes, it takes the least, the path of least resistance. So you can have water coming this way, but if there's a ridge here, then everything on this side could go this way. That's why you have to do a study. We can't do a study without having a petition, because somebody has to pay for that cost. There are initial costs, there's always initial costs. But we couldn't even tell you what the district would be, could be, or should be without having petitions in hand. But it could just be, like currently, it's here. Even with the lake level board, you could possibly, you know, come out a little bit further, grab in a couple more properties, make it more than 22, which would help you. But if you did a watershed study, you could pull in properties all the way out. If they were, if their water, surface water, whatever, comes into here, there's benefit here because their water is coming here, and there's benefit here because you're keeping them from flooding. So that's, we, I can't tell you what a boundary would be, there would have to be a study done first. As far as a written explanation, what I was really giving you is all the drain code. The drain code is on the state's website, if you want to go to that. Otherwise, I will make copies of the pertinent parts of this, and I will send them to Melanie so she can, you know, print them out. If you want to pick them up from her, she can put the minutes for tonight, if that's what you'd like, that's fine. And then the ocean or lands that belong to state and federal government across fields, that I would have no idea of. That's all part of the watershed studies. Anything, the only things that I can look at, being part of the Skeggen Hydrant Commissioner's Office, is anything in Meskegon County. Anything north of that, I can't access. I don't have rights to it, so that would be part of the study as well.
I just got one question from page for that study.
That's what I'm saying, there has to be a petition. And if, if, I suppose, you know, it depends. If, if you were to look at it and it was only this amount, that is a county drain, that would stay here. If we go outside, this is where we need, if it's outside the county, that's where we need the 50-plus landowners. This stays in here, we may not. But the landowners will be the ones that are going to owe the money for it, yes. Did I get them all?
I got a covered question for her first answer. Why would the drain commissioner want to accept this at all?
Because there's a benefit to more than just the lake pond owners for, for it being there on the Brown, on Browns Pond. Everybody out here benefits. Like I said, their water is flowing this way, this way, waters up here are flowing. If this got blocked off right here, everybody up here would start flooding. If this got blocked off, these people down here wouldn't have their water. They would then be upset, they'd be complaining that you guys are blocking their water. There is a benefit throughout the watershed. And the drain commissioner could step in to help the people that are in that watershed. Thank you.
Anything from the board, Frank? Mr. Schultz? I think you had a couple of questions, please.
Yes.
You had a couple of questions, so you get to come back up and.
The main, main part of the watershed study would be to determine what the watershed boundaries are. And I thank you for bringing up the, the concept of government ownership, because you could get a real large area, but a big part of it would not be eligible to be assessed for costs anyway, which would dilute the advantage of going into the larger watershed drain district concept. district concept. What needs to be done to the dam per the DQ, their most recent dam safety inspection, I've got it here, but I didn't have time to itemize all of them, but there's a, there's a list of things that they brought up and wanted addressed in some manner. Again, the dam safety unit's really good to work with if you're making progress toward goals. There are a lot more understanding than the dam owner who just throws the letter in the trash basket when it comes in. As far as why would the Drain Commissioner want to do a project? Typically, the Drain Commissioner's Office is somewhat, by its own nature, sort of reactive. They respond when people come to them with a petition or with complaints or concerns, and then they follow procedures to be both accountable and to be able to pay for whatever efforts are necessary to address those concerns or, in some cases, actual damages. As far as which side of the dam needs maintenance, both of them need, both sides need to be mowed. And it's just the mowing we're talking about. It's nothing where you have to hire a contractor to come in, but I know it's getting pretty As far as the fire department being assessed, that's a good concept, too, if it's independent from the township. There may be a, but I don't, I don't know, because if they come there, they're probably putting your houses' fire out, so I don't know how much that works, especially in this The ownership of the dam, I guess it does change with the establishment of a lake level association. The lake level association would become the owner of the dam. It wouldn't just be Blue Lake Township's dam. That's good in some ways, because you have more of a say in when and what to do. But you're also, well, being a public corporation, you still don't have the same liability exposure that a private landowner would, but there's a trade-off on that, too, I'm sure. As far as the pond silting in, yeah, I've noticed that, too, over the years, and there are some ways to address it. I mean, obviously, you have dredging, which is disruptive, you need permits, it's costly, especially if you want to do it over a large part of the pond. And depending on where all the houses and their septic tank and drain fields and basement floors and everything are located in elevation, there is an opportunity, quite likely, to raise the elevation, the water level of that pond. Especially if raising the embankment were part of a project, too. As far, any engineer that would come onto a project like that should certainly look at that, because there's a number of ways we can increase the flow through. We can raise the height of the dam, which means we could theoretically, especially if the, if the watershed study shows that the amount of water coming down isn't as great as what the state is saying, we could possibly raise the level of that pond and still have a safer dam than we have now, under existing geometrical constraints that we have.
Thank you, sir. And everybody remember, particularly, this is just to get information. We're not, you know, this is just ideas, because it is a concern to multiple people, and rightfully so. And I think one of the things you did bring up was the fire department, that is part of the municipality. However, they also benefit from the fact that there's dry hydrants down there, or should on their insurance. So that's a, that's a trade-off on that part, too, just for information. Do the boards have any more ideas? Anything else they want to say? Just might get copies of what you gave us, Dave, and whatever you sent. Stephanie, I will get copies of, and so far, it seems to me, we've got to start with reading, and everybody needs to step back and kind of think it over, because no matter what, no matter which way we go, no matter if we stay where we are, and the association stays as it is, and special assessment district does, it's still an ongoing issue. This isn't something, it's either there and you have to keep working at it to maintain it, or it's not there. I don't know that anybody wants that option. So everybody just think about it, step back and think about it, especially us. And I'm sure we'll get feedback from this. We're okay with that. And I think that should be it. Thank you for coming. Also, Mr. Hanson?
Yeah.
I understand you were in town, so meeting is adjourned at 8:46.
I wanted to make sure, I answered my question. My, my, I was, 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 I was,